... flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the June meeting of Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Middletown. I am Chairman Jim Burdis. With me tonight, we have Board Member Mark Woody, Board Members Mary Ann Cavallaro and Keith Hollick. Absent is Wendy Rodriguez. My missive, and Counsel Rich Krogan, and Martine, our Admin Assistant. What I'd like to do is call for a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes. First is Mary Ann. Second is Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The record will show all in favor. And we'll move forward in the agenda to our first applicant of the evening, Abraham Rosenbaum, 40 Adams Avenue, for an area variance for a single-family home. Would you please step forward?
Hi, I'm Morcha Ostolitz. I'm the owner of the property. Abraham couldn't come today. So, we gave in the plans and asked for an area variance because the lot is only 4,932 square feet instead of 5,000. And, two months ago, it was voted that the board needs more time to think about it. So, I'm here for that.
Understood. If I remember correctly, there was an issue with a garage on the property that kind of straddled two properties at the same time. Has anything been accomplished there?
Yeah, so about that garage, it was decided that it's going to be removed totally, that garage.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Well, you're seeking two variances, a lot depth. You have the required of 100. The actual is 98.46, so 1.5 or 1.5% variance request. And then, on the total lot square footage, you have 4923, and you're seeking 77 feet, again approximately a 1.5% variance.
Correct.
In going through the factors, the public hearing is still open on this. A photograph was handed out to all the board members depicting the lot in question. And we've gone through the five criterion where an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to nearby properties created. The public voiced in their concerns. The applicant has stated his desire to appease the neighbors. The benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue. Other than an area variance, in this particular lot, it's bounded on both sides. So, the applicant can't buy either property on either side since they're single-family homes on both sides. The requested area variance is substantial. In this case, it is 1.5% on both the lot coverage and on the lot depth, which would not be substantial. Adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Again, the neighbors voiced concern about the trees and drainage and the look. I believe the applicant stated he would downsize the house to be comparable to the existing houses. The alleged difficulty was self-created, which in this case it is. But he's also only able to buy what he can, what was available. There was concern about the garage being there, and the applicant said he would remove it. I think Keith had a question on the length of the driveway and the turnaround. I don't know if the applicant has satisfied you, Keith, or not.
Yes, according to the drawings, he has a sufficient driveway, and he had also put a garage under the house to provide additional parking.
So, again, the public hearing is open still, so members from the public are free to come forward. All right. So, does the applicant have anything new to add?
Um, no. This...
Okay. Because if, what we'd like to do is give you an opportunity to take a seat, and if there are any members from the public here to speak about the proposed project at 40 Adams Avenue, if you would please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Racine. I reside at 24 Adams Avenue. I handed out pictures to everyone tonight showing that this is going to impact all the trees in the area. The applicant stated that he would not remove any trees at all when building this. Well, he's going to have to if he does get that variance because one's hanging right in the middle of where he wants to put the house. It's going to, we have a wet area anyway in this neighborhood, and by removing trees, it's going to make it worse. And my fear is, again, that they're going to dig down, find a ton of water, and then build up the foundation as they did around the corner on the Height Avenue house. It's an eyesore. I just do not want to have that in my neighborhood, and I think that it'll be an environmental impact, and so that's why I do not want it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Rich Fless. I live directly across the street from this lot that they're proposing to build a house. I have a question on the driveway. How many cars are going to be able to, are they going to be able to park in that driveway? Can you tell by the drawings?
It looks to be two cars plus the garage.
Okay. Because we had a house which was right directly next to me, which was sold, thank goodness. All went to Longnarrow, parking two cars in their front yard, and that was an eyesore. Also, I believe every house on that side of the street is currently on an approved building lot. And I just think sticking a house in this, on this lot, in a smaller lot, is just going to change the look of the neighborhood. And I just don't think it's going to be a good fit for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that we wish to speak on this topic of 40 Adams Avenue? Hearing none. Like to invite the applicant back up?
Sure. The board has the option if there's new information that you would still like to consider, or you can close the public hearing.
Okay. I'd like to just speak with the board for a moment. If the board would like to request any other additional information from the applicant?
I have a question on the old information. I have a question on the old information.
Okay.
I'm confused by the half-garage on this side. I'm assuming that garage that you're talking about is here.
Mary Ann, just excuse me one second. Applicant?
Oh, yes.
Yep.
I'm confused by the half-garage. One question was answered. I wanted to know if you are taking that garage down, are you needing more money to buy additional property? And I, that was answered for me. Okay. I'm also concerned about this side because when I read the initial papers, and I did a lot of reading this weekend, it abuts with just a small alley for the neighbor. Is that correct? This side of your house is going to leave a small alleyway between the two houses, yours and theirs?
Correct.
And there was some concern about that. Is there any way you address that?
Yeah, that's why we, I bought it from, I bought it from this person, the lot, and it was part of the deal that she's going to remove the garage.
So, that was her house?
The garage.
She's removing this garage. Now I understand.
Yes.
Now I understand. Thank you.
Do any board members have any further questions for the applicant? Okay. At this point, I would see it fit to close the public hearing and then give the board members time between this month and next month to deliberate.
Yeah, consider all the information that's been provided.
Consider the information presented, and if all goes well, have a vote on this next month for the July meeting.
You need a motion to close the public hearing?
So, ask for that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mary Ann.
My second.
And Keith will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Do a roll call.
Roll call. Wendy's absent. Keith?
Aye.
Mary Ellen?
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann. Aye. Mark Woody?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, there we have it. We just closed the public hearing for this project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have Orange Terrace Properties. Would the applicant please like to step forward?
Hello, Ken. How are you this evening?
Good. How are you?
Very good, Mr. Chairman and members, and enjoy the first day of summer. It was a beautiful day today. My name's Al Fusco, Fusco Engineering in East Main Street, Middletown. And I'm representing the applicant on the engineering side. His attorneys are here as well, which will weigh in a little bit. But I wanted to go over a few things with the board initially.
Okay. Hold on just one moment, please. What I'd like to do is ask that comments from you and your counsel stick within the scope of new information that has not been presented already. And I'd also like to remind the board and the applicant that the public hearing portion of this proceeding is closed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll try to do my best with that, but I might cross over a hair here or there, and I apologize.
Fair enough. Thank you.
But, you know, basically, I know that, you know, a new letter went out to you recently on June 8th, I believe, and I was going to address that a little bit. And that's sort of what this chart is about. Is that, you know, we have, you know...
Just for clarification, I think that's the June 15th letter?
Aye.
That was the most recent letter that we received.
Okay. I had one, the one I was referring to was June 8th. The one before that that had some information regarding the percentages of areas adjacent to the property that were in the community of the site, and the variances looking for to go from a 50, from a 75-foot to a 50-foot.
The one before this letter.
And, so, there might have been a subsequent letter that I didn't have privy to that, but, or maybe the date was changed. I'm not sure. What's that? Is it June 15th?
Yes.
Is it the same?
Pretty much.
Okay.
You may have been looking at the draft.
Okay. All right, thank you. I had the draft, and it was sent to you on June 15th. I apologize.
Okay, so we're talking about the June 15th letter?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I apologize for that. But basically, what we're looking at is the communities there. There's a general community of the top of the hill there, and the streets adjoining Orange Terrace. You know, they're basically a lot of 50-foot lots. In Section 3 through 13, there's 152 lots, and 58% of them, you know, have, you know, 50-foot wide. So, it's a majority of them. If you go a little wider in some of the other areas, it goes up to about 64%. Middletown was sort of founded on 50-acre lots, 50 by 100. I grew up on one on Monaghan Avenue, and there were subdivisions that go back many, many years, you know, all showed the 50-foot lots. Some of them were inaccessible because they're on paper streets that had 50-foot wide, and a lot of them are unfiled subdivisions, and people purchased, you know, sometimes one, 10 lots in an area if they were looking to develop or had family or things of that nature. I was Commissioner of Public Works in Middletown for 25 years. I worked for the city for 33 years. And, you know, it's very common that most of the lots are, you know, 50-foot. There was a change, particularly when we were looking at several newer areas, you know, up on Presidential Heights, areas of that sort, that they changed everything to 75 feet. And the code did alter at one point to indicate that if you did have, you know, multiple lots, and they were 50-foot, every effort would be made to, you know, make them larger. However, it was something that was not all that common because in many cases, people only owned one lot at a time, and it really didn't matter. So, a lot of 50-foot houses were built, but...
Excuse me, Al?
Yes.
Didn't the code accommodate that with having, if a lot was landlocked, meaning a house built on one side, a house on the other, and it was a substandard lot that you were allowed to build there?
Yes, you're correct.
Otherwise, the requirement was 75 feet?
You are correct.
Okay.
You are correct, yes. And I actually helped draft that because that's what we were looking at. So, you know, I agree 100%. But, you know, looking at it in the respect that now we're looking at the whole package and looking at the financial aspects for the person that bought this land, and the hardship, and this and that and the other, which is already sent to you in writing and things of that nature, I'm not going to get into that. But one of the things that I did want to say is that, you know, we have done a lot of work to avoid some of the concerns that had been brought up. For example, the drainage, water coming off of Mountain Avenue, you know. I lived on Mountain Avenue for 25 years on the end, near the water tank, and, you know, I'm very familiar with the area. And a lot of water came off that hill, and it did create some burden. And I have seen some puddles down on some of the existing Orange Terrace lots, all right? On this lot, however, we took every effort. We're putting in a retaining wall up on top of the hill. We're going to stop the water. We're going to catch it. It'll stop at the retaining wall. There'll be stone in back of the retaining wall, and drainage underneath it to bring it out to the front of the retaining wall, where we're going to put in bio-retention swales to put the water back into the earth. So, it's not going to be surface water running off. The houses, we're going to take and we're going to put rain gardens to collect the gutters and leaders, again, to put the water back in the ground. So, we're not going to have water coming off of the hill, all right? There will be water coming off of the asphalt, all right, that would be in front of the house onto a cul-de-sac that would be extended. We had received information along the way that we needed to put a turnaround, and we had one that was suitable to the fire department and DPW that we had engaged in their conversations, and we have correspondence, I believe you have. Now, in addition to that, at the last meeting, the public did bring up some issues about the possibility that there was, that there had been water coming off from the existing Orange Terrace and creating a problem over the hill because there was a berm that was asked to be installed, that the city installed, but over the years, it deteriorated, they built up the asphalt, and the berm is no longer working. It's not on our property or even in front of our property, but one of the things that we had suggested to the owner, and he had agreed, is that we would recreate that berm of asphalt in order to take the water and direct it away from going down the hill, which was affecting one of the neighbor's properties. It will forward it down further following our roadway, which falls away from the existing Orange Terrace towards hillside. So, it will sheet flow down towards Hillside Cemetery, not coming near any of the houses down below. So, that's something else that we had indicated that we would do, I believe, in the most recent letter that was sent to you. So, we're trying to accommodate the drainage. The drainage below us, there's really nothing that can happen. The city could probably do some work with some repaving or things of that nature. But it's just a little puddle in front of a house, and it's not going to be exacerbated by, you know, our part of the project. So, basically, that's all I have. I'm sure the attorneys will want to add some more additional information, but if there's any questions that you have, and may, I'd be more than happy to entertain them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the engineer?
I have a concern about the road being 25 feet instead of 30 feet, like the rest of Orange Terrace. I was actually in that neighborhood a few days ago for a family event, and there was probably 12, 13 cars parked in the street, both sides of the road. And that was on a 30-foot road, and it was very difficult for cars to pass through, never mind a truck or anything bigger.
I believe I could speak for the client on that, and I don't believe that we would have any problem with the 30-foot road. This was agreed to by the Commissioner of Public Works. You know, one of the things we always try to do is avoid runoff, and if we don't need additional space, you know, we don't need additional blacktop, there's that much less runoff on it. So, that's why we're trying to keep everything in tight. That's why we put in the drainage up above and things of that nature. But I don't believe we have any issue with a 30-foot road, and we would stipulate to that. I don't have, we don't have a problem with that whatsoever. What happens in a lot of cases, you know, we do a lot of work all throughout three counties, and there's a new push with stormwater pollution prevention, is that you try to limit the amount of asphalt or impervious area wherever you can because runoff is becoming the biggest pollutant of it. And that's one of the reasons why we're stopping all the runoff at our building. We couldn't really stop the runoff on the road, so you try to either narrow the road or, you know, use other methods of, you know, prevention. But in this case, I don't believe we have any issue, and we would stipulate to a 30-foot road.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions for the engineer, let's move ahead to the next component of the client's representation.
Good evening. My name is Phil Dropkin, Frabakant, Lipman, and Frishberg. I really don't have anything. I think you have gotten more than enough paper from me.
They did great.
But I would just ask, Al, just a few pointed questions on the five-factor test and get, being the former DPW Commissioner, having worked for the city for 33 years, I think in respect of this particular project, he can be considered as an expert on these matters. So, Al, in your expert opinion, will the addition of the three homes that are being sought above the three as-of-right homes that the applicant is entitled to, at the end of the cul-de-sac, produce a detrimental impact to the neighborhood, to the surrounding area?
I don't believe so, no.
And the reason for that?
Well, we're taking care of the drainage, right, and we're not adding to any additional impacted water. You know, the roadways are acceptable for that purpose, and there's not going to be that many more vehicles or traffic.
Okay. And in your expert opinion, can the benefit sought by the applicant, which is the three homes above the three that he's entitled to as-of-right, can it be achieved by some feasible means other than a variance?
I don't believe so, no. It would require a variance.
Yeah, on one side, there is the cemetery, and the other side of the properties, there's somebody owns a home.
Just a comment on that.
Yes.
There's no other feasible way, but what about combining lots?
Well, he asked for three additional. Is there a way to get three additional, is what he asked.
Right, but that's, the factor is, can the benefit sought by applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance? So, isn't it possible just to combine three lots?
Well, but not to get six. He asked for additional.
But I'm asking.
Okay. That's always a possibility, of course.
And four lots, as was previously presented?
You know, that's all possible.
Okay.
However, the applicant is seeking the six because of, as we have previously demonstrated, the six are necessary in order for him to barely break even on the investment. So, the four wouldn't do it.
Why make it clear that it's not our sole focus to serve the financial needs of the client?
Understood. But the courts have looked at that as a factor insofar as feasibility is concerned. There is no way for the applicant to feasibly build six homes without a variance. And six homes are necessary in order to the applicant to get back his investment. That is not the only factor, but it's one of the five, five factors.
Understood.
You've already addressed the traffic problems. So, I'll ask you a related question. Does the variance, in your opinion, adversely affect the fiscal and physical and environmental conditions of the surrounding area?
I don't believe so because everything has to be built according to code, so it should not impact the environmental area whatsoever.
I thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions about what I have submitted, I will try to answer them.
Understood. Do any board members have any questions? No? I do. I noticed you left out two factors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can do that. One is, is the variance substantial? Look, the courts are divided on this. Some courts will look on a lot-by-lot basis, and some courts will look at the totality of the circumstances, and if it is in that case, well, if in the case of, if it's deemed substantial, what the courts have said is, this, the analysis doesn't end there. The analysis ultimately, at the end of the day, is what is the impact on the surrounding area? And this, this board can look at it on a lot-by-lot basis and determine it's substantial, then the analysis, so what's the impact on the surrounding area? Or you can look at the totality of the circumstances, the large percentage, the majority of homes in the surrounding area, however you define that surrounding areas, the homes are in 50-foot lots. In that particular case, it wouldn't be substantial. But there is a uncertainty in the courts, and they'll eventually, hopefully, work it through. And the other one that I missed?
Self-created.
Oh, yeah. Well, that issue is, you know, in my correspondence to you, I did lay out at some length in the May 17th letter, I believe was the date of it, that the applicant first became aware that there might be a problem, there's an affidavit to that effect, sometime in March or April of '22. He purchased the properties, I believe, the last one he purchased was in September '21. He started, he commenced buying the different lots, I believe, in May of '21, over a period of time. There was a fair amount of correspondence between the city and the applicant during that period, actually starting from, I've been able to find, in July of '21, 2021, asking about maps, designs, drawing the width of the streets, the turnabout. That went on right through February was the last time I saw, I do have a letter, which was in my correspondence, dated February, I believe it's February '22. I do have a letter, which was in my correspondence dated February, I believe it's February '22, in which the Commissioner of DPW says, "The road's fine. The water and sewer is fine. We're done with that particular part of the project." And then I think, well, I know you told me that you got a call from the Commissioner sometime in either March or April saying that there was a problem with getting six lots approved. So based upon the evidence that I've been able to find, I believe it is fair to say that the applicant was unaware that there was an issue until six or seven months after he purchased his last parcel. His affidavit does speak to the fact that he asked questions. He undertook some investigations. It's not clear exactly what those investigations were. This is not a situation in which he went in with open eyes knowing that there was a problem with the 50-foot, building on each 50-foot lot and on each of the two 44-foot lots. So was it self-created? It doesn't seem, looking at the facts, that it was. I could see an argument saying, "Well, you should have looked harder. You should have asked more." You know, but the, I did ask the applicant whether or not, because there was a statement made by the public that the applicant is an investor in the areas. Applicant says, told me, I am sharing with you, he has not bought anything in the area other than these six lot, other than one residential property. So it's not as if he's been here trading, doing transactions. This is his first foray in the city for a commercial as a business enterprise, as a business proposition.
If I could ask your expert, Mr. Fusco, a question?
Yes.
If the applicant had come to you in the beginning, what would you advise the applicant as far as if 50-foot is a buildable lot?
I would have told him what the code was and to, you know, that he had them all in one ownership at the time. I didn't do the survey for him. He had another fellow that got bogged down. And he brought it to me after he had already begun and purchased the property. So it was well into, with the dates pretty similar to what the counselor had said.
And is the code, to your knowledge, online and available to anyone?
I assume there's on E-code. I have my own little copy there.
Oh, okay.
That's what I use, but I'm a paper guy. I haven't looked it up, but I'm sure everything else is on E-code, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So at the end of the day, you weigh the benefits to be achieved by the applicant against the detriments to be incurred by the community insofar as health, safety, and welfare. I think I got that right?
Yes.
And it is a balancing.
Factor in the five factors.
The courts have, some of the courts have said, and Terry Rice, who's a scholar in this particular area, said, he refers to the first factor as a critical factor. Some of the courts have said that the first factor is, it's not the exact word, but preeminent among all of the factors. And that factor is, you bear with me just a moment, that I didn't commit to.
A desirable change
Yes.
in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by granting the variance.
And that's why when they look, some courts look at substantiality, they say, so is there going to be an adverse change? Because that factor seems to the, over the course of the case law, has seemed to have taken the most significance, the most prominence among the jurors.
But it is a balancing of all the factors
It is a balancing.
and safety and welfare versus the benefit achieved by the applicant.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
So at this time, if the board is ready for a motion for the granting of the variance, a motion to grant is not, it brings it to the discussion point of it, and then you take the vote. So by granting or by approving the motion, you're not necessarily approving the variance, just bringing it to the discussion so that you can then take a vote on the granting of the variance.
I believe our applicant's representative has a question.
Okay, I thought you were going to ask them to take a vote. And the discussion portion, we have obviously no objection to. But we would want the vote to be taken by a full board. And we would, we would consent to, I know there's a 62-day rule regarding this, but the applicant can consent to extension of that for the vote, because we would want a full board vote.
If I may, that's under the zoning code 475-.
Please speak into the microphone.
Please step forward. Thank you.
There is a provision in your zoning code 475-56I. It said, I have a copy if it would be helpful to you. It says, "By agreement between the board and the applicant, the 62-day period can be extended."
I understand your request. But from practicality standpoint, we could have all the best intentions in the world for having a full board at the next meeting. However, someone might be delayed at work or have a sick family member.
Well, I know, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that the next meeting in July, Wendy had previously indicated she would be away on vacation. So she will definitely not be here in July either.
I believe there may have been a change in that.
Oh, okay.
But again, life throws curveballs. So if you really want to push this out to July, there's no guarantee that we would still have a full board.
You're 100% correct. There's no knowing who's going to be here in July. Well, we do know who's here today, and it's not a full board. We would prefer a full board. We would ask you to consider it. And if there isn't a full board, then we'll have to deal with the situation then.
My also concern with sort of kicking the can down the road, so to speak, is if we end up in a situation in July where there's not even a quorum available.
Well,
Which we at least have.
Anything is possible. We're in the realm of speculation. We're requesting that the matter be extended with the possibility that there'll be a full board come July.
Okay, we can discuss it as a board if the board would like to grant the request. But the applicant would have to consent to it. And I would suggest a 60-day extension on that to provide the board the leeway should we not have a quorum or not have a full board.
Thank you.
So if the applicant is agreeable to that, then I would put it to the board whether they would want to do that.
Yes.
Keith, do you have a preference?
Okay. Mr. Woody?
I've committed to the summer meetings, all of them.
I will be here all summer as well.
Okay. I plan to be here for most of the meetings.
So is Wendy have a change, that she would be here in July?
Let me double-check my notes here. Give me just a moment.
Because if that's the case, then it seems like we would have a full board in July.
Okay. Here's a note that she would be available for July.
Okay, is the board agreeable to voting on this or at least having it come back in July?
I'm okay with that if the rest of the board feels they can make that, attend that meeting.
Yes.
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 So motion to adjourn. However, the applicant has to put on the record that they are willing to extend the time period for the vote that will exceed the 62 days for an additional 60 days.
We are agreeable to that.
So let the record reflect, the applicant has agreed to extend the time period from 62 days to a hun, or an additional 60 days on top of that. So if we could have a vote to adjourn for future consideration?
Fair enough. We'll need a first on that. Thank you, Mary Ann. And a second. Second is by Keith. We'll do a roll call for this. Wendy is absent. Keith?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And myself, an aye. The ayes have it.
Okay, so it's put over for future consideration, that being July. The public hearing is, still remains closed. There is no more new information that can be put forward. The record is complete, and we will plan to take a vote at the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along to our last and final agenda item for the evening. Applicant for a use variance at 137 Linden Avenue. If the applicant could please step forward.
Excuse me. Can I have one question? Last meeting.
Yes.
You voted, I think it was a tie, and it was not, the public portion was not closed. If you review the tape, you will see it wasn't closed.
The public hearing was closed last meeting.
Yes.
I'll review the tape.
Okay, fair enough.
Good evening. My name is Shen Huan Jiang. I have a property in 137 Linden Avenue. I bought it five years ago. Then I spent a lot of time and money, you know, to fix them, improve them. I have, right now, you know, that's a zoning OR2, which owner occupied. I rent one of my apartment, but I'm applied for rent another apartment, which is, you know, to cover my cost.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
I noticed that you submitted a floor plan with your paperwork.
Right.
So diagram of the interior of the building. What I'd like to ask is if you could submit perhaps for a next meeting, I guess you might call a site plan to show what the parking situation looks like?
I think I do submit the site plan before. The lot I can park in, 40 cars exist, you know, the space.
Okay, but just to have that on paper would be helpful to our board to make decisions.
Okay, I will, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant?
How many parking spots, did you say?
At least 40.
40?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have to.
Public hearing.
Yeah, okay. At this point, I'd like to ask the applicant to please have a seat. And we'll do a public hearing on this project for 137 Linden Avenue. Do we have any members of the public here that would like to speak on 137 Linden Avenue for the use variance, which would be a non-owner occupied two-family dwelling in OR2? I'd like to ask the clerk, have we received any correspondence on this matter? Okay. Mr. Kleiner?
I met this gentleman when we were doing our citywide cleanup years ago. And he's been consistently improving and taking care of that property. And I think owner occupied in that particular area of Linden Avenue is quite a difficult standard to meet, even though that is the zoning. So I, for what it's worth, would support his application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiner. Seeing as there's no other members of the public or correspondence to review, if it's okay with the board members, I'd like to close the public hearing.
I think you should keep the public hearing open, because then we'd only have 62 days to act. And if you're asking for additional documentation from the applicant, it really shortens the time period.
I understand. So I withdraw that request.
So if the, if you don't mind, if the applicant can come back up on a use variance, a use variance is very difficult to obtain. It's not something that's granted easily. And you have to have a lot of supporting documentation to provide to the board so the board can review it. The one that sticks out is Item D on a use variance, the alleged hardship has not been self-created. When you bought the property, it was in an OR2 zone. And that means that it had to be owner occupied. So the question is, when you bought it, you knew it had to be owner occupied. What's changed? How wasn't it self-created?
Honest, four years ago, when our Chinese community come to here, we don't know much about this situation, you know. We thought that we just helped to, you know, keep the middle, because we have a college here. My three kids were in college. My son was teaching the dancing. My daughter, one is in medical school, another one in the data science. So we hope, we like the middle town, you know, the mayor's very, you know, business friendly, help our community law, so we want to keep, you know, middle town growing. So that time, we just want to avoid the clean them, you know, was a lot of drug dealer there. And I met Jerry before, you know, I cleaned all the bushes, cleaned all the garbage, so drug dealer can't hide in there. You know, one time when I go to clean them, I saw the policeman chasing the drug dealer guy, the guy hiding on the, you know, behind the bush. The policeman can't find him. So once I cleaned them all, you know, right now, you know, my neighbor is good. I think people, you know, very happy with to, you know, we have us with them, you know.
Have you ever thought of selling it?
I would, yeah. But I spent a lot of money, honestly, right now, given the, can't cover the cost. The tax keep going up, you know, so. And another comparable, comparable building, 90 Linden Avenue. I'm at 137. That building much smaller than me. I think my building has like 15,000 square foot, three stories. And building 90, only 5,000 or 6,000 square foot to a three-story, but they have 12 units. I only have, you know, two units. And they don't have parking lot. I have 40, at least 40 parking lots exist.
And what did you say was the square footage of your building?
15,000 square foot, three stories.
Okay.
Yeah, I spent a lot of time and money to, you know, improve it. Right now, it looks good, you know.
Did you include that, how much money you bought it for, how much money you spent on the improvements?
Yeah.
And what you could sell? And what you could sell it for?
I give all the tax return to, you know, five years.
No, is that part of the, that's not, wouldn't be part of a tax return, though?
That's the cost, that everything in the tax return, the cost I spend, the money, the price I bought, how much I spend, you know, how much I lost, all the information on the tax return.
Is it currently rented?
Just one of them. I just applied for rent another one. That's all I need to cover my cost.
Okay. Well, some of the information, I believe, was just provided to the board tonight.
Right.
So maybe if you wanted to make a motion to put it over for future consideration and potentially next month, close the public hearing if so warranted.
That sounds fair to me. Is the board in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So if we can make a motion for future consideration?
So I'll make that.
Keeping the public hearing open?
A motion for future consideration, keeping the public hearing open on the application for 137 Linden Avenue for a use variance. Would somebody like to second that from the board?
First, right? Did somebody first it?
Well, I've made that a motion.
Right, so now you get a first and a second.
I'm the second.
Mark, Woody to first it.
Yes.
And.
I second.
Keith would second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do it by roll call. Start with Keith.
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Myself, aye. The ayes have it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Look forward to seeing you next month. All right, and motion to adjourn, please?
Make the motion.
Thank you, Mark.
I second.
Second. Thank you, Mary Ann. All in favor? Keith?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Myself, aye. The ayes have it.